Good evening. This eighth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As we move into tonight's proceedings, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge that at the start of April, our city experienced its lowest homicide rate since nineteen seventy. That is the least amount of murders in modern history. Mayor Scott, State's Attorney Bates, and many others deserve enormous credit for this milestone, but our success is about everyone coming together to say enough is enough. To be clear, Baltimore did that. We need to tell our own story because no one is going to tell it for us. And while the progress we've seen in violence reduction is heartening, we still have a long way to go. The federal and state funding landscapes continue to shift around us, leaving us with widening gaps in employment and educational opportunities, some of the very factors helping to drive down our homicide rate. Tonight, the City Council will continue to do the people's business to build systems that eradicate violence and lead us to the greatest comeback story in America. Tonight's invocation will be offered by Elder George Nicholson of Silliam Free Will Baptist Church. Elder Nicholson, the floor is yours.
I want to thank you for having me here tonight, as well as Councilman Bullock to the President. May we look to the Lord. Oh Almighty God, we humbly come before you in prayer to acknowledge what we need and we are asking for your gallions and wisdom. We realize that you are the source of all our knowledge and understanding. We would need your direction in this council meeting tonight and decision-making process, and we acknowledge that, and we're going to stay focused on that, dear Lord. I pray that this meeting will be a time of unity and progress, working together for the common goal that will benefit the people of Baltimore as well as those around. In your name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Elder Nicholson. Councilmember Blanchard will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will also acknowledge our former colleague, Councilman Kiefer Mitchell is in the house. Appreciate you being here with us, Councilman. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the journal for the April seventh, twenty twenty-five regular meeting proceedings are in members' inboxes.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing none, the journal is adopted. We'll now turn to executive nominations.
EA twenty-five dash zero zero one one, Tisha Guthrie, member Baltimore City Inclusionary Housing Board.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero zero one two, Rashida Bumbre, member Public Art Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations. That concludes executive nominations. Now we move on to bills being introduced. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero five zero, Water Bill, Tenant Right to Review, for the purpose of requiring the Department of Public Works to provide a specified person with a copy of a certain water or wastewater bill upon request and submission of specified documentation. Lead sponsor, Gray. Co-sponsors, Parker, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilman Gray, you have the floor.
President, colleagues, today I'm introducing Bill two-five-zero-zero-five-zero, Tenant Right to Review. This is a crucial step towards fairness, transparency, and accountability in how we handle utility billing for renters in Baltimore City. Right now, many tenants are responsible for paying water bills, yet they often struggle to access their own billing details. This bill changes that. It grants tenants the right to request copies of their waste and their water and wastewater bills directly from DPW, eliminating the need to rely on landlords or property managers. Some of the key provisions are direct access to bills. Tenants can request their their water and wastewater bills from DPW by just simply providing a copy of their lease. They get a timely response. DPW must provide these records promptly to ensure renters can review and dispute charges if necessary. This bill ensures tenants have the same access to billing information as homeowners, preventing overcharging and unnecessary disputes, and it's a protection from landlords and for landlords cannot obstruct or discourage tenants from requesting adjustments, payment plans, or discounts from DPW. This legislation is about empowering renters and ensuring that they have the tools to manage their expenses fairly. It is a simple but meaningful change that will make a real difference in the lives of Baltimore tenants, and I urge my colleagues to support this bill. This is just yet another step we are all taking to make sure that renters, homeowners, and just anyone living in Baltimore City has the housing justice that they need. So I really encourage all of my colleagues to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gray. Madam Clerk, if you could note, Vice President Middleton as a co-sponsor. This bill has been assigned to the Housing and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero five one, Labor and Employment, Pregnancy Accommodations, for the purpose of requiring reasonable accommodations in the workplace for certain employees upon request, protecting employees from adverse actions related to pregnancy, recovery from childbirth or a related condition, forbidding denial of employment opportunities based on certain circumstances, establishing penalties for violations of required accommodations, defining certain terms, and generally relating to protecting the rights of employees who are pregnant or recovering from childbirth or a related condition. Lead sponsors, Gray and Porter. Co-sponsors, Parker, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Bullock, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President.
In recognition of Black Maternal Health Week, which is being observed from April eleventh through April seventeenth of this year, I am honored to partner with Councilwoman Felicia Porter to introduce legislation to raise awareness and advocate for the improvement of maternal health outcomes within the African-American community. Councilwoman Porter will explain further in her remarks, but this is just one of the bills that we're putting, that we are introducing, and this is Pregnancy Accommodations, which is Bill two-five-zero-zero-five-one. This bill is about fairness, safety, and dignity for pregnant workers in Baltimore City. Too many workers have faced discrimination, unsafe conditions, or job loss simply for being pregnant. Many are forced to choose between their health and their paycheck. In Baltimore, this is completely unacceptable. This bill requires employers with two or more full-time employees to provide reasonable accommodations for pregnant workers, such as longer breaks, light duty assignments, modified schedules, and assistance with manual labor. It prohibits retaliatory actions by employers, and it ensures job protection because workers cannot be forced to take leave if accommodations are possible. These are not radical or expensive changes. These are basic human adjustments that allow people to stay safe and feel supported at work. This matters because this is just not a workers' rights issue. This is a racial equity and public health issue. Black women in Baltimore City face higher rates of pregnancy complications due to systemic barriers and workplace conditions that don't support their health. Lack of accommodations increases risk for miscarriages, preterm birth, and postpartum injuries. This bill helps reduce these disparities and ensure that no worker has to risk their health to keep their job. This legislation affirms our values, that pregnancy is not a liability and caregiving is not a weakness. It is about protecting workers, holding employers accountable, and making Baltimore a city that works for everyone. And for all pregnant women out there and postpartum, your health matters, and your job shouldn't be at risk because of your pregnancy. I urge all my colleagues to support this bill, and let's stand up for pregnant women and maternal health. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Porter? Nope. Okay. This bill has been assigned to the Labor and Workforce Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero five two, City Buildings, Provision of Menstrual Products, for the purpose of requiring municipal agencies to provide menstrual products free of cost, under certain circumstances, defining certain terms, and generally relating to the provision of menstrual products in buildings owned or leased by the city. Lead sponsor, Gray and Porter. Co-sponsors, Parker, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Bullock, Blanchard, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilman Gray.
I'm going three for three, and then I'll bow out for the rest of the time. Thank you. I'm proud to stand before you today to introduce this important progressive piece of legislation, which is the Provision of Menstrual Products, Bill two-five-zero-zero-five-two. This bill is not just a proposal, it's a reflection of our commitment to menstrual equity and the values that our city holds dear, which are dignity, accessibility, and public health. Access to menstrual products should be as fundamental as access to soap or toilet paper. It is an essential part of personal hygiene, and yet for far too many people, these products remain out of reach. Menstrual products are not a luxury. They are a necessity, and the absence of access can create undue stress and hardship. With this bill, we take a crucial step to ensure that no one in our community is forced to choose between their health, their dignity, and their ability to go about their everyday life. Let me be clear, this legislation is about menstrual equity, is about recognizing that menstruation is a natural and normal part of life, and that access to menstrual products is not a privilege but a right. This bill will require all city-owned and leased buildings with public restrooms provide menstrual products free of charge. This includes restrooms and all kinds of facilities, whether they are designated for men, women, family use, or single occupancy. This bill, however, is not something new, and I'm happy to announce that this is simply codifying the good work already being done by Mayor Brandon Scott's administration and the Department of General Services. Their efforts, the city, through their efforts, the city has begun taking steps to ensure menstrual products are available in many public facilities. By formally enacting this legislation, we make this commitment permanent, ensuring that all public restrooms and city buildings are equipped with menstrual products and that they are freely available to those who need them. Under this bill, municipal agencies will be responsible for ensuring that the dispensers are properly stocked and maintained as a part of routine upkeep. It mandates that no fees will be charged to access the essential product, and this is a simple, practical step that aligns with the city's broader goal of advancing equity, accessibility, and public health for all of our residents. I want to take a moment to highlight that this bill does not exist in a vacuum. It builds on the leadership of our mayor and the dedicated work of DGS. Their proactive efforts have already demonstrated the city's commitment of providing these essential products and public restrooms, and this legislation ensures that this commitment is sustained and expanded. We are not just, we are not joining a national movement for menstrual equity, but we are leading it. Across the country, cities and municipalities are recognizing the importance of free access to menstrual products, and Baltimore is proudly taking its place at the forefront of this critical effort. In closing, I urge my colleagues to support this bill. By passing it, we ensure that every resident, visitor, employee, and our city has access to the resources they need with dignity and health. This is not just a step forward towards greater equity, it's a recognition that we take care of the most basic needs of our people. We foster a stronger, more inclusive, and more compassionate community. I thank you for your time, and once again, I urge all my colleagues to support this
Thank you, Councilmembers. This bill has been assigned to the Labor and Workforce Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero five three, four zero zero one East Baltimore Street, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as four zero zero one East Baltimore Street, block six, block six-two-seven-nine, lot zero zero nine, as outlined and read on the accompanying plot, from the I-2 zoning district to the IMU-1 zoning district. Lead sponsor, Parker.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I look forward to speaking about this issue, this rezoning in the Land Use and Transportation Committee. This is another step forward in the continuing growth and transformation of the northeast side of Highland Sound and the Haven Street corridor, and we look forward to talking about the merits of this particular project.
Thank you, Councilman. This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero five four, Zoning, W-2 Overlay District Amendment, for the purpose of amending the view corridor requirements in the W-2 Overlay District and amending Table twelve, nine oh three four, Middle Branch Waterfront Area to include revised view corridors. Lead sponsor, Porter.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero five five, Zoning, Conditional Use, Parking Lot, Principal Use, Variances, seven oh one Mira Street, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a principal use parking lot on the property known as seven oh one Mira Street, block eleven fifty-five, lot seventy, as outlined and read on the accompanying plot, granting certain variances from minimum lot area requirements, minimum interior side yard, and minimum rear side yard requirements, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Jones.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero five six, Zoning, Conditional Use, Parking Lot, Principal Use, Variances, seven oh two Mira Street, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a principal use parking lot on the property known as seven oh two Mira Street, block eleven fifty-five, lot one oh one, as outlined and read on the accompanying plot, granting certain variances from minimum lot area, minimum interior side yard, and minimum rear yard requirements, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Jones.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero five seven, Sale of Property, fifty-four oh one Mason Lord Drive, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell, either at public or private sale, all its interests in certain property that is located at fifty-four oh one Mason Lord Drive, block sixty-three thirty-two, lot zero zero two, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Council President on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero five eight, Fair Wages for Tipped Employees, for the purpose of limiting and phasing out the amount of a tip credit an employer may deduct from the hourly wage of a certain employee, requiring certain disclosures before an employer may change or charge a consumer for a service fee, requiring an employer to submit a certain quarterly report to the Director of Finance, defining certain terms, and generally relating to fair wages for tipped employees. Lead sponsor, Bullock. Co-sponsors, Torrance, Gray, Jones, Ramos.
Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. All work has dignity, and that work should be rewarded with fair wages. Now, many of us in this council chamber fought for a raised minimum wage several years ago. Fortunately, that happened at the state level. We had the challenges here at the local level. But the reality is that there have been some workers who have been left behind. And because you work in a restaurant, because you work as a server, I believe you should also have access to that minimum wage. What we know is that people, many of them happen to be people of color, women, and other vulnerable groups, tend to be in the service industry. We believe it's time for us to move past that and to have a fair minimum wage across the board. What I also want to be very clear about is that this is not to eliminate tips. Tips are supposed to be in addition to one's wages for the work that they're performing. However, right now, we have a subminimum wage. I understand that there is some consternation about this potential bill, and we will hear that in Chair McCray's committee, but the reality is that for far too long, we have underpaid people for the value of their work. We can look to other jurisdictions, whether they be down the road in DC, or whether they be in Chicago, or other places across the country, that have no longer engaged this practice, and I believe we're behind the times. It is time for us to move past this point, to get us to a point where folks have this fair wage. I understand this will take a time, it will take a moment. This is not to be immediate. We're talking about phasing this out over the course of several years. I also want to be clear that this is a starting point, so I appreciate our colleagues who have signed on as co-sponsors, and I look forward to having increased dialogue with our other members of the council, committee members, our council president, and others, particularly our business owners. We know that there are some workers who are concerned about what happens to their tips. We don't want to take away their tips. We know there are business owners who are concerned about the impact on their bottom line. However, I will say this, it is not anti-business to be pro-work. We can do both at the same time. So again, thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate those who have co-sponsored. I look forward to having increased dialogue on this important piece to push us forward in terms of fair wages. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock. This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Porter as co-sponsor. Anyone else? Please note, Councilmember Porter is co-sponsor. This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee. We will now move on to resolutions of the City Council. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution twenty-five dash zero zero one six R, Informational Hearing, Black Maternal Health, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Health Department, Office of Equity and Civil Rights, Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and other relevant parties to appear before the City Council to provide insight on the perinatal and reproductive healthcare needs of the Black community of Baltimore, and to discuss strategies to support access to effective perinatal and reproductive healthcare for Black parents. Lead sponsor, Porter and Gray. Co-sponsors, Parker, McCray, Conway, Torrance, Bullock, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilmember Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I, along with my colleague, Councilman Gray, are honored to sponsor this informational hearing. We have a massive maternal mortality and morbidity crisis that stems from several factors. These includes disparities in care, lack of environments that promote healthy lifestyles, unequal access to quality healthcare in both urban and rural settings, and a shame and blame mentality for the poor and vulnerable. We are at a stage of urgency for women, for Black women, and our children. Following up on my legislation of the Child Health Equity Act of ensuring that we prioritize child health, we also have to prioritize the health of the mother and father. Regardless of socioeconomic status, race, education, and income, Black women are three to four times more likely to die from pregnancy-related complications than white women. Factors like poverty, lack of access to quality healthcare, and inadequate social support systems contribute to the poor maternal health outcomes. During this time of drastic cuts in funding, underserved women, Black women, and women of color are at a disadvantage, with nearly more than three times as likely as white women to experience pregnancy-related death. This upcoming Black Maternal Health Week, on April eleventh through the seventeenth, we will ensure that we center the legislative agenda that connects child, mother, father, and community to culturally competent healthcare that saves lives. As a first in Baltimore City, we are joining our state partners and our national partners to save the lives of Black women and children across this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much for your leadership, both to you and Councilmember Gray. This bill has been assigned to the Public Health and Environment Committee.
City Council Resolution twenty-five dash zero zero one seven R, Informational Hearing, Water for All Program Update, for the purpose of inviting the Department of Public Works, the Department of Finance, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and the Baltimore City Community Action Partnership to provide an update on the, to the City Council on the implementation of the Water for All program and the Water Accountability and Equity Act. Lead sponsor, Ramos. Co-sponsors, Parker, Conway, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Cohen.
Councilmember Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. Water is a human right. The City Council recognized this and passed Council Bill eighteen dash zero three zero seven, the Water Accountability and Equity Act, which was enacted in January of twenty twenty, with a modification bill on, which was enacted in December of that same year. The Water for All program was in that bill, and it replaces the BH2O program to provide water discounts for those who cannot afford to pay their water bill. Water for All includes assistance for homeowners. It also includes assistance for renters who have traditionally not been eligible for their water discounts, and I appreciate Councilman Gray's bill earlier. I think that fits nicely here as well. The Water for All program was implemented in twenty twenty-three after long delays and continues today, but the water bills are going up. This resolution is designed to understand how the Water for All program is doing, if it is serving the needs of our community, and if improvements need to be made to ensure that as the rates are rising, that more people can take advantage of this discount program. Moreover, we have heard complaints about the application process, how the discounts are provided, which is once a year and not monthly, and that some residents who are eligible for BH2O are not eligible for Water for All. During our upcoming hearing, we will discuss these and many, and any improvements with the Department of Public Works, Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the Finance Department, the CAP Centers, as well as hear from the public about their experience with this program. We need to make this program as good as it can be to be able to help our residents, and I look forward to the hearing, and I look forward to working with our colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. Appreciate the checkup on that. This bill has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations. The consent calendar was sent to members' inboxes in the Desk Documents folder. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent.
Thank Councilman Bullock, seconded by Ramos. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. We now move on to bills on second reader. The chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Though there only be one bill on second or third reader this evening, I still move that we suspend the rules to allow for short titles.
Without objection, we will proceed with short titles. We will proceed with short titles. Our first and only bill on second reader comes from the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero 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 six, Zoning Code Modifications.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey. Chairman Dorsey.
Thank you, Councilman Spine. Thank you, Mr. President. I've never reported a bill out of committee before, so here I am. The Land Use and Transportation Committee heard Council Bill twenty-five zero zero six, first on March twentieth, where it considered the entire bill and raft of amendments. And I want to thank the committee members for their attention to the bill in advance of that, the meetings that we were able to have in advance of that. So we had a lot of questions of sort of rudimentary nature, kind of moved out of the way well in advance, so that we could really conduct the committee's business very efficiently, and were able to hear this in-depth bill effectively in the course of that hearing, along with a bunch of amendments, which we gave further consideration to and came back on March twenty-seventh, where the committee recommended the bill favorable with amendments. There are committee amendments on the members' desks. I move the committee amendments.
Before we move the committee amendments, is there any debate or discussion on the committee amendments?
I do have a summary of them for the...
Yeah, Councilman, if you would please read, just let us know.
Great. There are a lot of them. I asked also that our summary of these amendments be distributed to members, because there are a lot of them, and actually, the summary was reformatted. We had one that was based on what was posted to Legistar, which was still in the format of the sponsor of the amendments and those sponsor amendment numbers, but per our standard process, everything has been consolidated into one set of committee amendments. So amendment number one is a technical amendment to properly orderize the authorizing statement of the bill. Number two is a technical amendment that corrects a typo in the existing code. Number three is a technical amendment that defines a government facility as being operated by government agencies. Amendment four defines a shared-use path. Number five modifies the powers and duties of the Planning Commission per the direction of the Planning Department, the Planning Commission, and the Law Department related to the frequency of comprehensive rezoning and updates to the land use map in the comprehensive master plan of the city. Amendment number six adds any new construction that contains a shared-use path to those things that require site plan review. Amendment number seven requires an owner to authorize in writing a representative who they send to represent them for application of a variance or conditional use of a thing. Amendment eight adds the City Council to the list of entities, along with the zoning administrator and the zoning board, who can approve variances. This is already the case, it was just an omission in the text as it existed before. Amendment number nine ensures that a variance that has been approved does not lapse so long as substantial construction has begun within two years of the variance's approval, whereas the current standard is only one year, which is often not enough time to get from the approval to actually getting the use and occupancy. This says that you don't have to get the use and occupancy, and you have two years to actually begin the construction work without your variance lapsing. Number ten is a technical amendment. It changes the process to approve, this is erroneous printing here. Number ten is a technical amendment. I'll just say that. I can go back if I have to. Number eleven, corrects and clarifies language on required inclusions in a statement of... Number Eleven corrects and clarifies language on required inclusions in a statement of intent. Number Twelve strikes a provision that was in the original code that sought to remove the requirement to advertise certain things in a newspaper. This is struck because that's actually a provision required in state law, and we kept this for consistency with state law. Number Thirteen removes duplicative usage standards for conversion of single-family to multifamily in the R7, R8, and OR zoning districts. Amendment Fourteen updates the explanatory note in the bill. This is not even a codified section of the bill. The bill just had a lot of explanatory notes in it. This just amends one of them. Number Fifteen removes the maximum floor area by use in the C1 district. Amendment Sixteen retains rear yard seating as an available option for neighborhood commercial dining establishments. The original bill sought to eliminate rooftop elevated and rear yard dining from what is permissible for neighborhood commercial establishments. This retains the rear yard as a possible option. Seventeen requires conditional use approval for outdoor dining in non-residential zoning districts if the outdoor dining is immediately abutting a residential property. Eighteen requires site plan review approval of designs for site plans with multiple principal structures on the lot. That's a new concept introduced in this bill. Amendment Nineteen exempts residential uses of up to three dwellings from off-street parking requirements and reconfigures that subsection of the code for drafting style. Twenty restores the old zoning code standard with respect to the expansion of non-conforming structures by variance. Twenty-one makes corrections to another explanatory note. Twenty-two is an update to the explanatory note for Table 11301, correcting an omission. Twenty-three is an update to Table 12301, correcting an omission. And twenty-four bans the use of variances for permitting a use not otherwise allowed in the zoning district. Thank you, Mr. President. That's 24 amendments, 24 explanations.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. We appreciate your hard work on this. Any debate or discussion before we move the amendments? Hearing and seeing none, feel free to move them.
I move the amendments, Mr. President.
All those in favor of adopting the amendments, please say aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion passes, and all the amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is also a set of four amendments that have my name on them, but they're not really from me. Earlier today, in reviewing the bill, DLR, continuing to put in much work on this bill and amendments, noticed a couple of things that needed to be corrected for style formatting or grammar that are non-substantive, that have been reviewed by the Law Department and meet legal sufficiency, and the Law Department has also affirmed that these are non-substantive. As an example, one removes the word "that," which is as drafted immediately following the word "that." You don't need the word "that" twice in a row. And so it just strikes one of them, which didn't need to be there. So these amendments come from DLR to just correct things so that the code reads properly. These were submitted to us after the five-hour requirement for amendments to be distributed to the council. So first, Mr. President, I want to ask for a suspension of the rule as necessary to allow for this late distribution of the amendments.
Unless there is any objection, without objection, Rule 117 will be suspended. Rule 117 is suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the amendments to the amendments.
Is there any debate or discussion on the amendments to the amendments? That, that, anybody? No? All right. All those in favor of approving the floor, the amendments to the amendments, say aye. Those opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted.
Mr. President, I move the bill as amended, favorable.
Any debate or discussion before the bill is moved? Hearing and seeing none, all those. Councilman Torrance, any unreadiness?
I got this.
Chair recognizes Councilman Torrance.
Thank you. I'm just making sure. We moved the amendments to the amendments, and then we moved amendments as amended, then the bill as amended. I'm just making sure we go in that order.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance.
We moved the amendments, and then we moved the amendments to the amendments, and then we moved the bill as amended.
Good to go. All right, Councilmen, please move them.
Moved.
So moved. All those in favor of approving the bill.
As amended.
As amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for a third reading.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And now, committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. Budget and Appropriations, Chair McCray. No announcements. Education, Youth, and Older Adults, Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to announce a joint hearing with our colleague Chairman Conway, who's Chair of Public Safety and Education, along with education, oh, sorry, Public Safety, along with our committee, Education, Youth, and Older Adults. I will be having a hearing on Thursday, May 1st at 4:00 p.m. It's a legislative oversight for summer youth programming. This is obviously an issue that is both a public safety issue and an issue as it relates to our young people and making sure that they have the resources that are available and that we have a plan of action going into the summer. But I do want to also give some time for Chair Conway to add some context as well.
Chairman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chair Bullock. The intention of this hearing is to be prepared. We know every summer, we want to make sure that we meet the needs of our young people, but that we also send incorrect messaging and being very clear in what our expectations are for the summer. So we are teaming up with Chair Bullock and his committee to make sure that we are thinking about those considerations. The Public Safety Committee, or rather, this hearing is joint hearing with Education, Youth, and Older Adults, will be held May 1st, Thursday. It's going to actually be hosted in the community because we also want to hear from the community. We want parents there. We want students there. We want to hear what people are looking for and the needs that need to be met in order to make sure that we're prepared for our summer. We're going to be at Ebmanson Westside High School, and I'm looking for a robust discussion and hopefully learn about what we need going into the summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
4:00 p.m.
Councilman Bullock.
Just to follow up, I also wanted to be thankful to Councilman Gray for allowing us to be in the 8th District. We think it's a very, a very appropriate place for us to be in terms of the West Side, so glad to have you.
Indeed. Thank you for the outreach, and thank you, Chairman. All right, Housing and Economic Development, Councilman Chair Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Economic Development Committee will be hearing City Council Resolution 25-003R on June 17th at 4:00 p.m. This is the second iteration of the permanent hearing. As we promised administration and the public, that we'll be doing quarterly hearings. We will get updates from the requested data that we have requested, as well as timelines. In addition to that, we will also be hearing City Council Bill 25-003, Historic Preservation and Conservation Districts, the same on April 29th at 4:00 p.m., so that we can work out the amendments with the administration to move that bill out of committee and back to the council floor. That be it, sir.
Thank you. Labor and Workforce, Chairman Jones.
President, no announcements at this time.
Great. Thank you. Land Use and Transportation, Mr. Dorsey, you're back. Great. Legislative Investigations, Chairman Schleifer. No announcements. Public Health and the Environment, Chair Porter. No announcements. Public Safety, anything else? Chair Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two modifications to hearings that were already called, so for Bill Number 25-0018, Emergency Scene, Unauthorized Persons Prohibited. We're going to be moving that meeting to Tuesday, the 29th, at noon in council chambers. And likewise, for the other bill that was initially scheduled for April 22nd, this is Bill 25-0005, Arson Offender Registry Registration Requirement. We're going to be moving that to April 29th at 12:01 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Finally, Committee of the Whole will hold a legislative oversight hearing for the purpose of calling on the Director of Human Resources and the Budget Director to brief the council on overtime spending and vacant positions. The hearing will be held on Thursday, May 22nd, beginning at 9:30 a.m. in the council chambers. We now move to regular announcements. Members, please wait till we recognize to make any regular announcements. First, members, please note that the regularly scheduled May 19th, 2025 City Council meeting and accompanying council meeting day activities will be canceled. Calendar invitations will be updated accordingly. I would also like us to acknowledge the passing of Armstead Jones, Sr., Director of the Baltimore City Board of Elections since 2017 and a titan of civic engagement. His commitment to ensuring the sanctity of our elections and promoting safe access to voting helped put power in the hands of Baltimore's people. May his blessing be a memory. Other regular announcements. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge today's signee die in the General Assembly. I just want to thank our delegation for fighting hard for us in the General Assembly. It was a tough year for the budget and several other things. So there's a few hours left. There's a few, a few many bills, one of mine included, that's kind of floating around over there. But I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work of our, of our delegation on behalf of all of us in the city.
Absolutely. Well said.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Regular announcements? Go on once. Councilmember Ramos.
Sharing the good news, the Lake Montebello Loop is open, so people can go around as many times as they want with no one blocking them. So it's really, this was an engineering feat, let me tell you, for fixing that sinkhole. I know it took a long time, but it's definitely worth it, and I just wanted to invite the city to enjoy this great gem. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos, and thank you for the brick you provided for my office. Much appreciated. We will now hold a moment of silence for Armstead Jones. Thank you. Tonight's district spotlight comes from Councilmember Mark Parker of the 1st District. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I don't know. I, good evening, colleagues and those who are with us today, guests. It's a privilege to be invited to share a little bit about the 1st District of Baltimore City in Southeast Baltimore. My reflections tonight are based on two events of the last few weeks. One was this past, just yesterday, the Katton Memorial Foundation Remembrance, 25th Anniversary Remembrance Ceremony, incredibly important to the Polish community, but especially of the Polish community, not only in Baltimore but around the country. And then, a few weeks ago, many of you were present in Greetown for Greek Independence Day. And so it had me reflecting on the waves of immigrants who have settled and come to Southeast Baltimore over the past 150 years and continue to come each and every day to build new lives for themselves here in the community. This is one of my favorite murals in Baltimore, reflecting Southern and Eastern, early, late 19th century, early 20th century waves of Southern and Eastern European migrants, and then transitioning now into Central Caribbean and South American migrants, and kind of the waves of folks who have, who have come, who have built a life, who made a place for themselves and for their families in Southeast Baltimore. I note that Southeast Baltimore is, of all the districts, the 1st District has the highest percentage of international, internationally born folks, foreign-born residents, and that's my block by itself speaks four different languages, at least. I haven't done, my side of the block across 12 houses are speaking four different languages at home, right? And that's not counting the other side of the block there. Historical note, this has been true for a long time. The I Am an American's Day Parade began in 1942 in Baltimore and continued to 1994. At its height, it had 300,000 people coming out to participate in the event. I heard that, reading news reports, the 1978 parade was at least three and a half hours long from start to finish, began in Falls Point on Broadway, went all the way around Patterson Park, and then down to the end of the Plasky Monument at Eastern and Linwood. And it's an interesting name. The, the, one of the, one of the central concepts, beginning during World War II and continuing after World War II, was the, the claim of immigrant communities, especially Polish hyphenated American, Italian hyphenated American, Greek hyphenated American, Lithuania hyphenated American, Ukrainian hyphenated American, all these hyphenated American folks to say, no, 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 like, I am, I am a full American just as much as my neighbors who moved here from South Carolina, or my neighbors in West Baltimore, East Baltimore, or my neighbors who have been here for 300 years. Like, we are, we are American. We fought in this war together, right? We fought here and around the world. We've come back home. Like, we are collectively, I am an American. And so part of the parade was always the different ethnic communities of Southeast Baltimore marching. So here on the left, are folks in traditional Polish garb, and then that's the late delegate Carolyn Chrissieak in the 1993 parade there at the bottom. And then Ukrainian folks there, marching. You notice, this is from the 19, this is like 1955. Ukraine was pointing out that Ukrainian insurgent army still fights Russian communism. And so the history isn't, isn't that old, right? I mean, history repeats itself, and here we are with Ukraine still fighting for, for freedom related to Russia. So just want to lift that up. A huge, huge impact, huge citywide festival. Keep going here. These are contemporary ones, scenes from the Greek Independence Day Parade here at the end of March. So it was wonderful to be joined by many of my colleagues. Thank you for coming out, and Council President and others that comfortable who were with us that, that day. Keep going here. I should say the Greek Folk Festival, St. Nicholas, is coming up at the beginning of June. So if you missed the celebration this time, come back for the food and dancing across, across three or four days. It's great. This is the Katton Memorial Ceremony yesterday. The memorial itself is, is the really striking gold-bronze statue at the heart of Harbor East, right? In the middle of that circle. So if you never stop there, we often drive by or bike by or walk around, but the next time you're there, stop, visit, read. It, not to bring us down, but it commemorates 22,000, 22,000 Polish leaders, military officers, political leaders, cultural leaders, who were massacred by, by the Soviet Army and the Soviet secret police under Stalin in 1940, 85 years ago this spring, in April and May. And so it's, it's, it's an important memory, not only for the Polish community, but for, for all of us of the, of the cost, right? Of totalitarianism and, and the way in which violence in the hands of, of people, of dictators and people of ill will causes massive, massive devastation for communities around the world continuing to this, this day. This is the Ukrainian festival, takes place in the fall. The Ukrainian Catholic Church there on, on Eastern Avenue at, at Montford there. And so I definitely encourage folks to come participate. It's, it's always been an important celebration in recent years as the attention of the world has turned to Ukraine. The connections, the close connections between our communities here in Baltimore and communities there have, have loomed large. And so our neighbors, our Ukrainian neighbors have so appreciated the support and care of elected officials, of neighbors, of others who have come out to celebrate their history and culture, and also to share solidarity with them. So I invite you to come and, and be part of, of that gathering in the fall. This is the Highland Sound Wine Festival. It began, it's coming up here soon, on May, May the 5th. And this began the Italian community in Highland Sound. People associate Little Italy, and of course, it's very strong there. Highland Sound's Italian community is actually, was even larger historically. It's just a bigger neighborhood. And so this is the now-closed Our Lady of, no comments, I suppose, the Our Lady of Pompeii, Roman Catholic Church. But the wine festival began, there's tradition of Italian families in Highland Sound making their own wine. And so, and so this was an opportunity to kind of bring out your best, such as you could make it in your home, and, and share with the community and have competitions and, and celebrate, celebrate that part of, of this, this tradition of, of Italian wine making. Hosted by the Deepesquali family, of course, but also many other families from the community. So I invite you to come out there on May, May the 5th. And finally, here we are, so we have the mayor and the council president with us. This is representing our newest, I say newest, but it's, it's been going on for 25 or 30 years, 30 years at least, in Southeast Baltimore, the waves of migrants from Central and South America. and South America. This is a celebration of Mexican independence, but also of a number of Central American Independence Days that stack up with each other between September fifteenth and October fifteenth. So we are out here in Joseph Lee Park in Bayview, actually, in the second district. So thank you, Councilperson McCray, for letting me use these photos. Next, Patterson High School and Bayview Hospital. Again, celebrating the newest and the newest contributions of folks here to our community, especially as we take account the growth of the city, the recent beginnings of growth and what that looks like. Certainly, we know that that is people coming from all over the country and all over the world, but in Highland Sound and southeast Baltimore and the first district in particular, it's our Spanish-speaking, our Latin American neighbors who are bringing the fullness of themselves, their rich history and culture and identity, and bringing it to our schools and to our churches and religious communities and our businesses, and doing so much to enliven and enrich our city, just like waves of migrants have done for generations before them. And so we're incredibly grateful for that. I mean, so the first district, a great place to move, whether you're moving from across the country for a fellowship at Hopkins or to start work here in the city, whether you're moving from around the world as an immigrant or a refugee to come and make a place for yourself, all are welcome. We are enriched. We know that the strength comes from the way in which we make space for each other, for our identities, for our cultures, for our leadership, and welcome new people to contribute to the city that's constantly changing and transforming around us. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman Parker, for holding it down in the first district. Appreciate you for that. Before we close, I do want to just acknowledge the students that are here this evening. Good to see you all. Thank you for coming. Just want to say, this is your house. You are always welcome here at City Hall, and just know that when you show up, it matters, matters to all of us, matters to your city. So really appreciate you all being here tonight, and thanks for coming and representing. The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, April twenty-eighth, at five P M. There being no further business, this concludes the eighth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.